I have a meeting in order. I'd like to welcome everyone to Port Clinton City Council regular meetings of November 28, 2023, and then let the heart love council chambers support the city vote. Please stand for the President's allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and all the sense for this serving.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. In thy kingdom come all things and blessings of heaven. Forgive us our sins and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have tresed and against us. In this time of temptation, the Lord has shown us the light, King of power and glory for ever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. Maybe seated. Please call the roll. Beth Gilman?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Richard Morgan?
Present.
Kelly Gangel?
Here.
Pat Hovis?
Here.
Jerry Trolle?
Here.
Kathy King?
Here. Thank you.
Council, your previous received the November 14, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes from November 14.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Hovis to approve the November 14, 2023 regular meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The close is same sign. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The chair notes that certification has been made regarding compliance with the rules and notifications of this meeting. No guest presentation, no public comments. Move on to executive office reports. Counsel, there are three new ordinances this evening. Ordinance 2823 and 2923 to be assigned to finance and can go to the full three reads. Ordinance 3023 will not it's not assigned to a committee and administration has asked to be passed on its first reading. Counsel so chooses. On the second readings, administration has asked that ordinance 2523 be passed this evening on its second reading and it is not assigned to a committee and it's a normal thing that we do. Correct. That's all I have this evening. I don't want to start coughing, so we won't do the mayor before.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of counsel, good evening. This one's tough.
Yeah.
The term fan is a derivative of fanatic and you all know that when it comes to Ohio State and Portland Redskins, I am definitely a fanatic. You know that I had a friendly wager with the mayor of Oak Harbor a few weeks ago, a few months ago, and that cost me a couple pizzas and a couple cases of soda pop. Well, I had another friendly wager with an individual I can't mention for a couple of reasons, and this one cost me a little bit of my pride and dignity. So here we go. Hail to those pictures, valiant. Hail to those conquering heroes.
Can you turn the camera?
Hail, hail to Michigan, the champions of the West. Go blue.
Oh, no.
I'm so sorry. I'm so, so, so sorry.
Oh, God.
Trust me, I know it was difficult for you to hear me saying it was much more difficult for me to actually say it and say those words.
You're never gonna live that down.
I know. I know. So anyways, all right, here we go.
Yeah.
Had a good conversation earlier today with Luke Johnson, who's the supervisor for our service department. Leaf cleanup, leaf pickup is going somewhat according to schedule. They ran into a little snafu last week with one of the pieces of equipment went down for the count. They will continue this week, the north, south, east, west pattern. The east-west pattern, they've completed one route because of the issue last week. North-south stopped at Jackson, but they have continued Monday and Tuesday. Jackson, north-south heading, heading eastbound. They'll continue that same pattern repeatedly through the rest of this week and then for the next two weeks, it will be a spot check as they see piles of leaves. They will continue that and continue that process until the leaf pickup is completed for the summer or for the winter weather permitting and equipment permitting. This Saturday, December 2nd, I hear Santa Claus is coming to town. Santa will be at the a la carte after hours in downtown Port Clinton from 3:00 to 5:00 for everyone to come take pictures. Need to point out, Santa and I have become good friends. You know, one of the neat things is when you're mayor, you get the phone number for the Easter Bunny, Santa Claus, the Tooth Fairy, and Santa and I have had several conversations. And he, the last time I spoke with him, he wanted me to remind the citizens of Port Clinton that although dogs and cats are welcome for the event Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 at a la carte, snakes and spiders are absolutely prohibited. Lizards and other things will he said he'll take it on a case-by-case basis, but kids are certainly more welcome to come along. Dogs and cats, absolutely, positively no snakes and spiders. No, let me say that again on Santa's behalf, no snakes and spiders. Absolutely no snakes and spiders. Following, following that event at a la carte after hours at 5:30, there will be the annual Christmas parade. It will go down Second Street, starting at the old community market parking lot, ending at Adams Street for a tree lighting ceremony shortly thereafter. Santa and Mrs. Claus will stick around at the Santa House for a little bit after that parade to say hi to the kids. No snakes and spiders. Santa will return to Port Clinton quite a few times between December 3rd and December 20th. He'll be at the Santa House on Adams Street every Sunday between the 3rd and the 2nd from noon until 1:00, and every Wednesday from 5:00 until 6:00 p.m. Again, that's from December 3rd to the 20th. On Sundays, noon to 1:00, and on Wednesdays, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Counsel, I believe you've all completed a park survey. If you haven't, I hope you would. I would ask that you again share that with all of your contacts, the Parks and Land Survey, and as a reminder, this coming Thursday at 7:00 p.m. at the Art Garage, they'll be the first of two public discussions. Again, what you see at this moment, OHM, who's the engineering firm hired by the city to conduct this, is still in the information gathering stages, and that's what Thursday is intended to be, a continuation of that information gathering stage. At this point, nothing is final. Can I repeat that again? Nothing is final. It's just a discussion to see how the community would like to proceed with our parks. Mark your calendar for December 8th. It's a Saturday. There are several things happening in the community on that day, but 13ABC, as part of their hopes for the holidays program, will be at the Salvation Army office just outside of City Hall here on East Perry Street from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to pick up free, or pick up free, to pick up new unwrapped toys for kids. Again, 13ABC will be there from 6:00 to 6:00 to pick up new unwrapped toys. They'll be live on air at various times from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and again between the 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock timeframe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That would be Friday.
What did I say?
Saturday.
Oh, yeah, it is. Friday the 8th. Friday the 8th, I'm sorry. Friday the 8th from 6:00 to 6:00. Thank you very much. Along those same lines with the Salvation Army, of course, the city has signed up to ring the bell at Friendship here in Buckeye and Perry on the 14th. There are still open time slots. See Mrs. Ostermer if you are interested in signing up to read, to ring the Salvation Army bell. And finally, I had a really good conversation earlier today with Nick Marsaco. Background here, there have been an abundance of squad calls in the Port Clinton jurisdiction that includes the township surrounding us for difficulty breathing. It got me thinking. Had a conversation with, with the president of the hospital about COVID and flu and RSV and all of the stuff that's happening around, around town. His biggest concern at this point is that flu is, is here. It's here a couple months early. There's really no comparison because flu is normally not around this time of year. RSV, which is, has always been around, but has gotten more press, if you will, the past couple of years post-COVID. Bottom line is, he encourages everyone to get their flu shot and, and COVID shot. I'm up to date. I hope the rest of you are, because it is, it is here. It's going to be here forever. So that's my PSA. Get your, get your shots.
There's also RSV shot.
There is also for, yes, for seniors. Thank you. There is an RSV shot. If you go to the hospital pharmacy walk-in clinic, they will do an RSV shot.
Yeah.
With that, Madam President, the second one has any questions? Mr. Trolle, you've already used yours.
Oh, I got you. I do have a question.
I'm good.
Why is the gazebo closed off on Adams? I see there's cones on the steps. Nobody can get up there.
Well, since when they're decorating, there's no issue there. They decorated it. I have no clue about that.
I'll find out and let you know.
Oh, you know, okay.
Maybe Red Buck's.
Let me know if I can pass it over.
Red Buck's kids.
Somebody wanted to take family pictures and they've done it every year, and they tried to this year and they couldn't get up on the gazebo because there was cones on the steps.
I'm not aware. We'll find out.
Thank you.
I have a question too. I'm sure it's for you and Tracy, but you brought it up. Since my job entails doing leaves, and I, I could tell something was broken because I had something that sat there for a while and I knew you guys weren't just forgetting. All the maples are down, but a lot of them haven't started, and I know, will we get a notice? Will Sandy put on the Facebook page something when it ends? I don't care when, as long as I know. Could that be possible? Like if you?
Not really. It's weather, like the mayor said.
Yeah, but at some point, you're gonna know. It's, I mean, you, you can't say it now, but at some point.
No, like you said, we're gonna spot check for the next two weeks.
Right. And so at some point.
Then we're done.
You're gonna tell your people that we're gonna be done on Friday or something.
We're gonna spot check for the next two weeks and then we're done.
Okay, so two weeks.
Done.
Okay.
And it may be sooner. If we get snowed out, it'll be sooner than that. I just, I wouldn't wait, I guess, is what I'm trying to help.
No, but I can't put them out if they're still on the tree. And that's all I'm asking, because if it's after that, I'll cart them away. I won't like it, but I will.
Correct.
But, but the people who live here will want to know, so they don't put all the stuff out the curb and you, and you left it yesterday and they sit there all week, all winter.
We did that with brush pick up and we still have tons of people.
Yes, I know, but it, but at least if they don't know, you can't blame them. So just a suggestion. I mean, it's just a Facebook page. That's all it is.
Okay. The auditor's not what this treasurer is reporting. Bed tax as of 11/28/23, $313,763.14. Dock tax is $25,678.07. Thank you. The auditor.
I think, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Supervisors report, Mr. Goldstone?
Nothing at the moment, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee reports, finance, Ms. Hovis?
We will be having a committee meeting on December 12 at 5:30 to discuss these two ordinances.
Thank you. Economic, or I'm sorry, environment and public works.
Yeah, we, we held a committee meeting tonight and, and when the time comes for approving Resolution 23-13, which will be the next council meeting, the committee is wholeheartedly backed at 100%. In a minute for the council, for the committee meeting will be out shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Safety services, Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. We have, we do not have anything started at the present time. We're just finishing up what we've had, so we will not have a committee meeting in December unless you tell us we have.
Okay. Thank you. Economic and committee development, Mrs. Phillips?
We don't have any legislation pending, but we'll have a brief meeting after this meeting, because I have something I want to talk about.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to correspondence. Under correspondence, we have architecture review board meeting minutes from October 12, 2023. Any community reinvestment act tax application letter, November 2023, provided by Mr. Bickley, the housing officer. Do I have a motion to approve the correspondence as stated?
Madam President, I move to approve and accept the correspondence as listed here.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Trolle, thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Trolle to approve the correspondence as listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Motion carries. The correspondence are approved. We'll move on to readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have a regular third reading. We have a bunch of summaries. Would the court please read it by title and summary only ordinance 24-23?
Ordinance number 24-23, as amended, an ordinance modifying Part 7 of the Port Clinton modified ordinances by ordaining Chapter 735, short-term rentals, in order to establish a registration program and guidelines for the operation of short-term rentals and declaring an emergency.
Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 24-23?
Madam President, I move to amend this ordinance.
Okay. Do you like to state the reasons and what you're?
Would you like to bring it up?
Yes.
All right. We keep thinking of little things that need fixing, so we've directed anything we came up with to the auditor who has this on their hand, pretty much. And I will let you know that the amendments that we have, or changes to this that we amend are, that we are making practical improvements for property owners and for City Hall while still promoting public. We're working on some directing registration fees to be deposited into the city's general fund. We didn't have a place before. Establish and clarify registration year beginning March 1st and concluding February 28th, moving the expiration date from December 31st to February 28th, which we have for the year. Going to allow for renewal period for the following year beginning November 1st through February 28th, which is a four month, as opposed to an unrealistic rush at the end of December. I'm going to establish the auditor as the executive officer managing the registration and certification, because we think that's where we're probably, well, what you sent their questions in, we thought that. And we're going to request amending sections pertaining to declaration of nuisances, suspensions, revocations, clarifying that alleged violations are to be considered and penalties issued with the concurrence of the safety service director. Things that we turned in, we just try to make things go along a little bit easier. Little things like replacing the treasurer with the auditor. And we struck monthly returns on the bed tax ordinances, because it doesn't actually say monthly in the bed tax ordinance at the present time. Anyway, I'll think. Registration fees for general operating expenses are a part of these changes that we thought. It just flows better now, which it didn't before. Trying to cook. We'll probably have to do this again in about a year, make sure that all the changes we made still make sense. That's what I'm amending for 2423.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question first? Is, is every, everything that you're talking about that's been amended is, is reflected in this document?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the one that you got.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. King, to amend ordinance 24-23 as stated and as sent out to all of council. Would the court please call the roll? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 24-23 is hereby amended. Does counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 24-23? Seeing that, ordinance 24-23 will be moved to its third reading on December 12, 2023 at the regular scheduled council meeting. Would the court please read by title and summary only ordinance 25-23?
Ordinance number 25-23, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, to obtain new buoys through the ODNR navigational aids grant.
Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 25-23?
Madam President, I move to waive the three required readings, ordinance 25-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Trolle. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, seconded by Mr. Trolle to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 25-23. Would the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero. The three required readings are hereby waived. Does counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 25-23?
Madam President, I move we adopt ordinance 25-23.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Gilman, seconded by Mr. Trolle to adopt ordinance 25-23. Would the court please call the roll? Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 25-23 is hereby adopted. Would the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 26-23?
Ordinance number 26-23, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Natural Resources for financial assistance for the operation of the Port Clinton Harbor Patrol and appropriating funds.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 26-23? Seeing that, ordinance 26-23 will move to its third reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on December 12, 2023. Would the court please read by title and summary only, resolution 23-13?
Resolution number 23-13, a resolution of support for the Portage River Arts and Recreational Corridor and the inclusion of certain projects in state capital budget.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to resolution 23-13? Seeing that, resolution 23-13 will move to its third reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting on December 12, 2023. We'll move on to first readings of ordinances and resolutions. Would the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 28-23?
Ordinance number 28-23, an ordinance operating certain funds for the operation of the city of Portland, Ohio.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 28-23? Seeing that, ordinance 28-23 will move to a second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting, December 12, 2023. Would the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 29-23?
Ordinance number 29-23, ordinance amending ordinance number 3-23 as amended by the city of Portland.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 29-23? Seeing that, ordinance 29-23 will move to a second reading at the next regular scheduled council meeting, December 12, 2023. Would the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 30-23?
Ordinance number 30-23, an ordinance establishing the salaries of certain supervisory positions classified as exempt employees of the city of Port Clinton, Ohio, and replacing any previous ordinance referencing salaries for certain exempt employees and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Does counsel wish to take any action as to ordinance 30-23?
Mr. Harson?
Yes.
I, I know this is just first reading. Am I allowed to ask a question for clarification?
Yes. This, so to clarify this, this is similar to the one last time. It just amends to, no.
Hourly to basically salary.
Mind's a simple question. Define for me exactly what exempt means in this circumstance.
Exempt from overtime, non-exempt.
It means their salary, not hourly?
No. Exempt from overtime means you can't get overtime, right?
Correct.
Okay. So what this is doing, these were all hourly employees, so they're just going to salary. So they would not get overtime to finalize, in this particular case.
They also, they also don't negotiate as part of the union, is incorrect.
They do not.
Okay, thank you.
It makes, just, let me, one, I'm sorry, one clarification. Now that puts everybody in those positions to be salaried, which they should have been, in my opinion, all of one. So now we've just cleaned it all up so that everybody's on the same thing.
I was pretty sure, but when I read this.
Supervisors are salaried and your union employees are hourly, obviously.
Okay. I didn't see defined there, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's same, pretty much same as we did the last time.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel was taking the action as to ordinance 30-23?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to waive the three required readings.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hovis, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to waive the three required readings as to ordinance 30-23. Would the court please call the roll? Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero, and the three required readings are hereby waived. Does counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 30-23?
Madam President, I move to retain the urgency clause.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? I have a motion by Mrs. Hovis, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to retain the emergency clauses to ordinance 30-23. Would the court please call the roll? Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero. The emergency clauses hereby retained. Does counsel wish to take any further action as to ordinance 30-23?
Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance 30-23.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any further discussion? I have a motion by Ms. Mrs. Hovis, seconded by Ms. Phillips, to adopt ordinance 30-23. Would the court please call the roll? Jerry Trolle?
Yes.
Kelly Gangel?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
Yes.
Kathy King?
Yes.
Pat Hovis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried by a vote of seven zero. Ordinance 30-23 is hereby adopted. We went to business from the floor. I just want to do a reminder that the December 26 meeting is moved to December 19. That is also when we'll do the swearing-in of the newly elected officials. So you should let this Ostermer know who will be swearing-in. It can be any current elected official. So, because she has some paperwork to prepare. We'll start it at 5:30 prior to, just because there's a P.O.S., so. Mr. Morgan?
Just a simple question. Driving by City Beach, is there any move to get more of those rocks, or is that all we can get? Because the water's out now. I know your people are picking up leaves and everything. I understand that.
There's a deal. We paid it. We paid a company to do it. They brought their equipment in today. The rocks are frozen. They could not get them off today.
Okay, so it is still an ongoing issue?
Yeah, it's never going to... Back in the day, stuff was dumped out there, okay? And when the sand comes in, it covers it up. Sand goes out, it brings it up. We're just chase, dog chasing tail in action.
But it's not replenishing. Everything you take out is out, correct?
No. It's, just keeps coming up. There's so much in there, it's never going to go out. We feel like we're beating our head against the wall.
Understood. I mean, it's better than it was years ago.
It has gotten better, but it's, it's all the way down. And one area that was covered up just recently, matter of fact, I took a ride with Luke today, or yesterday, down the beach to take a look at that. And we made the decision to call the company to come in and get it out of there, okay? But it's just a spot that was totally clean, but we did it earlier this spring, I guess it was, or summer. It's all back in again. So it's, it's just going to happen. It's mother nature. I can't control that. So we're trying our best.
No, I understood. Thank you.
And to answer your question, we did not put those cones up. That's what I was checking my phone. So.
Cones.
So the cones you asked about.
Mr. Trolle.
Gary, I'm sorry, Gary.
The other questioner.
The cones, we did not put them up. They say PC Fire Department, so I have no idea why they're there. Unless they were there for Santa or something.
Maybe it was on fire and you didn't see it.
Okay, thank you.
They just went and checked for me while we were talking.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Gangel?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. I have a journey to take you guys on to lead to a question, I guess. I was looking at the ordinance for the short-term rentals, and it refers to the transient occupancy tax ordinance, so I was like, well, I'll take a look at that. And in the transit occupancy tax, it defines hotel as five or more rooms used to accommodate a guest. So I thought, well, that's interesting. If we have a short-term rental that's five rooms or more, is it considered a hotel? So it took me to our zoning ordinance.
This is a journey.
It is a journey. So I was like, well, how's that defined, right? I was like, because they, you know, they're not going to be considered hotels. And I went through all 211 definitions in our zoning ordinance to see kind of what, what hotel would be defined as. And it just talks about transient lodging, but then I was like, okay, that broadens that definition then. So where do we have short-term rentals? And it doesn't seem like we have a definition in our zoning ordinance currently that would fit a short-term rental because of its, as fit a short-term rental, because of its, as they are in use today, because if we, based on these definitions, transient occupancy is just hotel, hotel, there's like summer bed and breakfast, there's specific, you know, specific definitions. So how would a short-term rental fit into our current zoning ordinance and kind of our zoning areas? The question to whoever can answer it. Because as it looks, it doesn't look like short-term rental would fit anywhere, because if we would consider it as a hotel as defined, then we wouldn't have residential areas, don't know, wouldn't be right, because we have more residential areas.
Are you saying the definite, what this whole, the ordinance does, doesn't define clearly enough what is, say, an Airbnb as opposed to a hotel, you're saying that's not clear enough?
In the, in our zoning, in our zoning ordinance as a city.
But you're...
We don't, we don't have, for short-term rentals, a description of, yeah, individually, we have hotels, and then we have dwellings or condominiums or different things that has our own that don't fit that definition.
Yep, so if that becomes enacted, you're saying there will be some confusion, do I have that?
So as it current, as I'm understanding it, right now, any short-term rental in a residential rental area goes against our zoning ordinance, so that's as I'm reading it now, because it says dwellings, because the next word in my dirty, this wonderful chart of our residential zones and what can be allowed where, hotels, which motels or anything for transient accommodation, are not permitted in R-one, R-three, R-four areas, so, as it reads, like I said, just as I'm reading it, it seems like short-term rentals in residential areas actively goes against any type of ordinance we currently have. I don't know if the law director can answer that question, or, I mean, Mr. Bickley is not here, our zoning inspector.
So under the, that tax ordinance, the one that you, the transient occupancy tax ordinance, the short-term rental for collecting transient occupancy tax is defined as renting one or more rooms in a home.
Yeah, so my question...
For less than thirty days.
Sure, so I looked at the transient occupancy tax and saw the definitions, and like I said, it struck me as odd, because hotels are five or more rooms, which led me to the zoning, the zoning ordinance, so taking the transient tax part out of it, and our zoning ordinance, where it's intended.
What a short-term rental is?
Yeah.
Well, I know there was a discussion previously of what a dwelling is, and dwellings for permanent use, I don't think we've ever defined, and I don't know, I mean, you might want to talk to the prior law director or Mr. Vila, who amended the previous ordinance, but I don't think it was ever defined, because short-term rentals are fairly new as opposed to transient occupancy tax, that's been around forever, and that defines it as one or more room, and other issues, so I'm pretty sure it's not defined in the zoning. I'm sure, as you recall, we have amended prior sections in our codified ordinances because they are outdated, that is probably the one that's going to need to be looked at.
Sure, so then that begs the question too, shouldn't we update this first before we have an ordinance with regulations for short-term rentals, if short-term rentals as of today, if zoning needs to be updated, goes against our...
The zoning does not really have anything to do with this ordinance, this ordinance...
No, how can we regulate something that goes against a current ordinance?
It's not going against the zoning ordinance, because this is regulating the short-term rentals that we have currently in place under our transient occupancy tax ordinance, that's referred to in this ordinance, which indicates one or more rooms. So this is a reg, this is a regulatory ordinance, we're not creating new short-term rentals, we're not creating a new definition for short-term rentals, because that definition of one or more rooms comes from the state in the revised code as one or more rooms, and if something is not specifically defined in our ordinances or in our codified ordinances, we refer to the state, because Portland is a statutory municipality. So we took the, well, the prior law director took the definition of one or more ru, rooms in the transient occupancy tax ordinance, and I can't remember when, but it was a while back that was actually amended, and he amended that and put that in the transient occupancy ordinance. So I don't see why we would have to wait to amend the zoning, because if something doesn't, we don't, we don't cross-reference the ordinance, if something in this ordinance is not defined, then you look to see what's in the state, in the revised code, because we're a statutory city, we're not, we don't go by a charter, we don't create everything. So this ordinance is regulating what was defined in the transient occupancy tax ordinance. We don't really need zoning to define what it is, because it's not a zoning issue, it states one or more rooms for rent in a, in a home, apartment, condo, whatever, you know, they, people use for thirty days or less, or, I'm sorry, less than thirty days. So that's a definition, and also it says, you know, for, for payment. So, you know, you want to rent out a room in a home, and you're going to charge somebody a hundred dollars a night or whatever, for less than thirty days, that would fall under the transient occupancy tax ordinance, which has been in place, I think, I don't even know, I think it was since the eighties, has been in place, and in that one, that dictates what transient occupancy tax can be collected for, which is a short-term rental, this is just regul, this ordinance...
So what I'm hearing, basically, it's two separate issues?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'm raising the issue then, that currently, as our ordinances read, we shouldn't have any short-term rentals in residential areas, so how are we going to rectify that?
Well, I don't understand why we shouldn't have any, we have had them.
I'm saying, and it's defined, I'm not saying...
It's defined in our transient occupancy tax.
Well, you just said we don't cross-reference ordinances, I'm talking about the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'm not, you're going to have to speak with Mr. Bickley about zoning, what I'm referring to specifically is the transient occupancy tax.
Yeah, I hear you, so, but that's fine, I'm talking about, in our zoning ordinance, as it currently reads, short-term rentals are not defined, because I'm raising the issue, and I don't expect you to solve it, we can talk to the zoning director, that's fine, but as it's defined, and as this beautiful little chart shows, they shouldn't be in residential areas, which is an issue, because we have been in residential areas, obviously, so we need to update our ordinance to reflect that, because it's just hard, we don't cross-reference ordinances, I understand, but it's hard to have an ordinance regulating something that would technically be illegal, so.
But this can regulate condos and those definitions, you're allowed to have non-owner occupancy, this would regulate those, like, there's a whole list of things that it would regulate, we have some commercial areas that would regulate, I've raised a question too about definitions in the past, I think we do need some clarification still, but this would regulate where they're allowed currently, and there are some areas...
Sure.
Or some definitions that fit that, and I think, and I could be way off base, but like with the definition thing from the state, we had legislation a while ago about low-speed vehicles and something with golf carts, and I, I don't, I get them confused, but the state set a definition about those, if I'm in the right path?
It's low speed and under speed.
Yeah, those, I still don't know what they are, I'd have to look it up, but the state sets that definition, we can pass legislation about it, but we don't have to worry about exactly what those crazy vehicles are, what kind of motor engine, I don't even know licensing, but we did stuff with that, and that was confusing, but it's because the state said it, so like the short-term rental, do I think we need something in ours to define it? Absolutely, I think it's such a new vehicle, or such a new thing, but I do agree with you, that definition was confusing, and maybe we can get Mr. Bickley to come to a meeting and explain to all of us, I, I don't know.
Okay.
Because, yeah, I, that's how I read it too, and we had some discussion in committees about that.
Sure.
But I think it does apply to, there are things where, where they're allowed, like condos, by definition, you can have non-owner occupancy and...
Sure, yeah.
There are some places where it applies.
Ms. Gable, I know Ms. Phillips brought this up at a committee meeting, I'm not sure if you were there or not, but we're not talking at this point, this ordinance does not refer to where they, where they're allowed and where they're not, and Ms. Phillips suggested that that takes place, this conversation takes place about a year out or so, to see if an additional regulation needs to be put in to maybe regulate where they are allowed or not. Right now, based on our transient occupancy tax ordinance, which we collect the transient occupancy tax on, it defines a short-term rental, and it's, it's really just a transient occupancy rental, it's a, the short-term rental is a new word that has come about recently, it's always been, you know, transient occupancy, that's, that's always the common term, that's been used since the eighties, it's been around, I know Ms. Bryant from the tax department has commented, hated that those have been around since the eighties, and the city regulates it since the eighties, this, this ordinance right here is not telling us where it is allowed or not allowed, all it's doing is regulating what we currently have in place.
I understand, I don't have a concern with the ordinance, let's, it's a separate issue, because I was reading the ordinance, it led me to the zoning, I'm bringing it up as an issue.
So you're saying we're going to regulate something that is technically illegal?
Yeah, but we're okay with that, and that's, that's fine, as the ordinance reads, that's fine, it's very detailed, I read it, I don't have an issue with it, this is a separate issue that I'm raising.
I see, and I should say, there's a detailed procedure, zoning needs to be changed, so what you want to do is you want to bring this to the planning commission, and they listen to whatever concerns someone has, and then they make a recommendation to council to amend the zoning book, and then it comes to council, then there has to be a public meeting, then after the public meeting, the ordinance is presented to council for three readings, that's the same thing that happened with the, I guess, the apartment complex that is no more, at the corner of Third and Bolton. So planning, the planning commission actually has to send a letter to council saying that, you know, we either say, sure, go ahead, or maybe, but we'll change a few things, or, you know, no, so that's how that procedure goes, and anyone can make that recommendation, but it, it starts through planning.
Sure, but I, and this was my confusion with the definition, we know, our, we're allowing our zoning to go unenforced, and that was my issue with that.
Yeah.
We know that that should not be there, we're collecting a fee on it, and we're enforcing things like color, somebody painted their business, and are making them repaint it, because they didn't comply with our standards, so that was what I had issue with, is we know that they shouldn't be there, that needs addressed, not necessarily the zoning changes, why are we allowing this and not other things? And I, that did, I still do have an issue with that, so I think, but maybe Mr. Bickley would come to our next meeting, and, or, I, I don't know, and address it with us, because that's how, when you look at that zoning quote, it's user defined, used defined at eleven-thirty-seven, that chart you have, and that's based on the definitions in eleven-twenty-five, so. But I do think this, we need something, and this does apply to the places where it's allowed, so, in my opinion.
Yeah, and like I said, the, the ordinance, great, cool, very detailed, a lot of work went into it, I guess they're a separate, separate issue, so, oh my, that's it for me.
And more than one issue can be brought to planning at the same time, so different sections can be brought, and then that can be done all in one process, instead of having to go through that process for each issue?
The frustration is, it's not, if it's not being enforced now, if we change something, that's the frustration, because right now, as I read it too, they're not allowed in single residential dwellings, and they're there, so what are we doing about it? That was, so, but I do agree, you know, different steps, different things, different times, but...
Technically, we could trash this whole, the ordinance, if we just stick with the rule in the zoning and say, no, short-term rentals allowed in residential, I'm not saying we should.
Well, I think we need, yeah, I think we need regulation, but, you know, we talk about other things, you know, there already are, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think they are allowed in some places, so we do need to regulate further allow.
And Ms. Phillips, I would suggest that maybe you and Ms. Gable set up a meeting with Mr. Bickley, and also Mark Messa from the county, he has been very instrumental in working with Mr. Bickley on zoning, on zoning, and he was a, he helps with the county with their transient occupancy tax, and definitely consults on that, and a few years ago, I think it was maybe twenty-twenty, when we first started talking about this issue, Mr. Messa actually gave a draft to the city to look at and see what we can do to establish an ordinance like the one that's at its second read today, because of the regulation, so I, I would suggest you meet with both of those individuals, maybe meet the planning commission, because that's the only way that anything, and they might be explaining it better to you, especially Mr. Messa.
And I understand this is new, like, a lot of this is new, and some of these didn't even exist years ago, so I, I understand that.
They could probably explain to you, answer your questions, because, like I said, Mr. Messa was very instrumental in this about three years ago, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Bickley has, we haven't been able to set the meeting because of schedule conflicts, but, yeah, I think before the next meeting, can you do that?
Anything else, Ms. Phillips?
I brought some people in town the other day, and it was after dusk, and they had not been in Port Clinton in a long time, and were very impressed with how much better it looks, how the lighting is, they loved the tree, so I think we're all on a successful pole here, it's good to see what's going on out there, and yes, we are getting a lot of leaves picked up, and the war are coming down, so I'm going to use my lawnmower to get rid of most of them. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hobus?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Mr. Trolle?
Yeah, gentlemen, how are we standing on the flip project, are they out for bid yet, or?
Not yet, the, I think the last time we talked, U.S. Department of Agriculture asked our bond council for some documentation.
Right, right.
That was sent, it was returned, asking for some revisions, those revisions are underway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Why is the USDA involved? I don't get that.
Again, the U.S., the U.S. Department of Agriculture is underwriting the entire project once it's completed, they've given us nineteen million dollars in grants, and another eight or ten million dollars.
Yes, but this is not agriculture, that's what I'm understanding.
It fits into their...
Some definition, something.
Team, yeah, yeah.
Don't...
Put a good horse in the mouth.
Take this nineteen million dollar order.
No, I knew it was legal, I was just...
Okay, Mrs. King?
Oh, I guess I'm done.
Oh.
Sorry, Julie.
Actually, you've asked way too many questions.
I know.
I have some questions about ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-three, so on page two, and I apologize if I already asked the law director, and, and I, I did not get to check my email, like, right before I came, so, one of the things, like, on that, is like, I'm a little concerned about the definition of bedroom versus, or sleeping area, just because, like, so I put together a list of a lot of the Airbnbs that are being offered currently, and some of them, like, were pretty small residences for like, and, you know, and allowing ten people, and I know, like, when you get more people in a small compressed space, you're like, more likely to have, you know, parking and all that stuff, so like, would it be like, if it's a three-bedroom house, like, I have an extra room that's not a bedroom by definition, because it, it doesn't meet zoning for, you know what I mean? So, like, bedrooms have very specific definitions, and like, the windows, and like, how, how things are, so can they just put a sleeping area anywhere, like, could they have three sleeping areas in their house, and then three bedrooms, and then have twelve people there? That's like, I, I'm just wondering if, if we're only allowing one sleeping area, or if it's, you know, I just got a little confused about that.
Sure, so the ordinance that the committee approved initially to go to council specifically defined a bedroom.
Yeah, and it's here.
And it's gone, that definition has been removed as part of the amendment, that definition specifically said, and I can't remember, I think, like, seventy square feet, it has a window, it has to have, I think, a closet, that was put in, I took that definition from the Ohio Realtors Association. I specifically put that definition in there to define what a bedroom is, so exactly what you stated couldn't happen.
Okay, because, yeah, I did see that that was crossed out, too, so...
Right, they removed it. So, Mr. Vila removed it, and I think the Safety Service Committee endorsed it just now, so with the removal of a definition, it gives a pre-fore all for any sleeping room, I mean, you can make a bathroom a sleeping room, I guess, if you want to, so that takes it to, you can have twelve people in a very small house, you can have sixteen, you can have twenty, it's, it's, it's a bit dicey, because you're really not giving clear parameters. When someone hears bedroom, and the definition before said, I believe it said, like, two people per bedroom, so you have...
Yeah, and then two additional people. So like, that's where I'm concerned that we're opening this up to be like forty people in a small house.
I agree with you. I agree with you. Um, so the bedroom, let's say there's a three-bedroom house, if you said. So if the definition of the bedroom was in there, it would, two people in one bedroom, two people in another bedroom, two people in another bedroom. So you have two, four, six people.
And then two additional.
Two people in the living room, on the sofa bed or wherever, you know. So that way it controls that three-bedroom house to have eight people as opposed to.
We need to add that back.
As opposed to sixteen or, and I know some people, um, had concerns because people were using like basements and like, and sleeping bunk beds.
Yeah, cause that's a safety issue as well.
And doing things like that. So that's why, um, that was concerning to me that that was removed. Um, because it, it kind of, like you said, opens the door for anything to be used as a sleeping room. And then that could put people, like you said, you're right, in danger. Cause if you don't have the right.
Cause in the basement, you need like those windows that you can escape from, like in order for it to be a bedroom.
You need a way in and a way out. And with the reason why a bedroom is a bedroom as opposed to a sleeping room, which really could be anything. I mean, it could be a bathroom.
Right.
Um, is because if the house is on fire and you try to go to a door and the door is hot, you can't touch it. You have the window to exit.
Right.
So I, I agree with you. Um, I was not part of the amendment change, so I really can't say why it was taken out.
Can we get that put back in? Like, I mean.
If council chooses, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's concerning to me that, that definition.
Mayor Stenner?
Mayor Stenner. Thank you, thank you. I can't speak for Mr. Beal. He and I had several private conversations about bedroom. I'm going to make an assumption he just forgot it. I would suggest that a member of council make a motion to add the definition of bedroom back to the ordinance, whether it's today or next week. Have a second and vote on it. Cause I, I would concur with everything that was just said. I truly believe it was, uh.
Yeah, can, uh, I, I, I moved to amend, um, twenty tw- or ordinance twenty-four twenty-three to include the definition of a bedroom.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I, I, I agree with everything. But Mr. Beal, it wasn't an accident. I mean, he physically went in and changed it for a reason. And before we change it back, it would make sense that we talk to him and find out why he changed it.
Mayor, do you think it was just an oversight?
I think it was just an oversight. Cause it, it was one of the bullet points that we talked about.
Yeah, but you say that, but yet when I did this.
But again, it's, it's your decision as council to do whatever it is you want to do.
What I'm saying, all of this stuff is crossed out. He didn't just forget. Somebody crossed it out.
And it's our understanding he is the one who crossed it out. So I agree. You should probably wait till Mr. Beal is back.
Will you be here next?
And have that conversation with him.
You'll be back in a second.
I mean, there's no hurt, cause we have another meeting. I mean, we could.
Well, next is the third reading, so I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about it.
Well, you can amend things on the floor.
Okay.
So would you like to table your motion at this point?
I mean, it's up to you.
So, I mean, I would like, because like the actual definition should be written by someone who understands it. So I feel like we should amend it at this point. And then if Mr. Beal has a reason to take it out, we can take it out next time. But I'd rather it be there and like us be able to read it beforehand.
Cause as of right now, we could put fifty people in my house.
Yeah.
Two in the bathroom, two in the closet, two in the other closet, two, yeah, right, you know.
And unfortunately, that is true. Unfortunately, people capitalize.
And that's exactly what we're trying to create that here.
So I have my motion still stands.
Still stands? Okay.
One second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mrs. King, second to Mr. Foley, to add section C with the definition of a bedroom back into this amended ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-three. Would you please, please, council roll? Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Mark Phillip?
Yes.
Richard Morgan?
We can always change it back.
Yes.
Yes.
And then I'll know you ask.
Kelly Gangle?
Yes.
Pat Ovis?
Yes.
Jerry Trolle? Kathy King?
Yes.
Motion carries. C is amended back to include the definition of a bedroom. Excuse me. Are we including the previous definition?
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know if that should be the previous definition, but it just needs to be defined. Yeah.
Definition of a bedroom.
Well, I'd go to the previous one, cause we have that in writing.
Yeah. So the next question I have is like, I started to really think about this responsible local person part in the, of the ordinance. And I don't understand how that gives us any benefit really. Because like, we don't require that of like, you know, if I leave town and there's an emerg, you know, somebody's house sitting, you know, if they're breaking the law, they're gonna get arrested. Um, it's, you know, if the house is on fire and I'm out of town, like nobody's gonna help me, you know, like, if, if somebody knows, hey Kathy, it was your house on fire, I'm sure Beth would text me. But like, that's my question. What is, what does the responsible local person actually give us?
So the gentleman that.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry. I, I'm gonna take off my mayor hat for a second and put on my daytime job hat.
I know, and this is what concerns me as well.
And, and what, what that local person will do, you're out of here. You're evicted. Whereas without that, it's just law enforcement.
Right.
That's one of, that's one of the benefits of that person.
Well, and also, um, the gentlemen that were here months back, I, that were here also for meetings. They, their biggest issue, and it's a realistic issue, is that probably definitely over eighty percent, I wanna say closer to ninety percent, if not more, of the owners of these properties do not live in Portland.
Right.
Um, they, and some do not even live in the state of Ohio. So the issue that they had was that, um, the owner lived in Michigan. And so when the, um, occupants who were, you know, staying for whatever, one or two nights, um, were too loud, um, had, had a hot tub and they were having a, a party, um, one ran into their fence.
Yeah.
They called law enforcement and basically, um, these people are like, we're just here for the night. We don't, we don't know anything. We can't tell you anything. We can't do anything. All we can do is stop doing what we're doing. But they tried to call the person in Michigan. They couldn't get ahold of them. Um, it, it just caused a lot of frustration for the residents in the city. So what the responsible local person would do, and this is in a lot of other ordinances for, um, cities that have regulations on their short-term rentals, they designate like a company, like.
A property management.
Like, yeah, like a property management company, or they designate a person, or they, you know, they could be the person if they live within, you know, if they live within the hour. Um, but what that does is it, it breaks that, that issue where they will have to come to the home and they step into the shoes of the owner. And now you have an owner who you say like, hey, so-and-so's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And the owner can like Mr. Sider said, get out.
The police can't be victim, but the guy renting it can, or the representative.
And so all the police can really do is go out there and say, hey, cut it out. And then they can start it back up when they, the police leave. And that's what prompted this whole discussion.
I mean, I, I do understand that, but I mean, I think the nuisance itself then becomes like the, those, the people who do not.
Well, the gentleman that were here said that, um, the police didn't really do anything as far as write a report or do anything to that extent. So that local responsible person, the police could tell that person, listen, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, write this report. We're gonna have to cite them. We're gonna have to do whatever they would do if it was the owner. Or somebody who's more in charge of people who are leaving tomorrow and you'll never see them again.
But are we providing this contact information to police and fire?
So when, no, but when, um, or actually, you know what, I'm not sure because we haven't passed this ordinance yet. So we're not really sure how it's going to be enforced. But the idea that was being thrown around was we have the rental advisory, um, notification right on the door. And so that responsible local person's name needs to be right there on the door. So when the police come to the home, you know, that information is right there for them to access and call.
And when they have, well, their application.
They put it on there as well.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just concerned that like, from what you just said, that like, nothing will happen. If the police aren't going to cite them, are they going to ask for the responsible local person?
Yeah, that's what, that's what the point is. And they have to be there within an hour away.
Mrs. King, I know that the police department does have a list of property management places around. And if there's anything, fire alarms, trouble, the police will call that person, so.
It just bridges the gap. So like, we have some property owners in California. Um, if, you know, something that goes on with their property, there's just no way to get ahold of them.
I mean, luckily, we are small enough.
So you're saying the police can only enter, can only act if there's actually a crime committed? Whereas the responsible person can say, get out of here. You don't come back tomorrow.
Right.
You violated the house rules.
Right.
No house parties.
Can they kick them out that night?
It's been done.
And if they don't, then they can call the police and get them out.
Most of the time, the people legally out.
It just bridges the gap. It bridges the gap. Um, so if like, for example, somebody turns the music on too loud, please come turn it down. We turn it back up, turn it down, turn it, you know, I mean, this is something where a person says, you know, we're, we're, we're not dealing with this nonsense and we need to go. Or whatever they say.
And then, alright, so the nuisance chapter is another place where I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry.
That was amended by Mr. Beal, so I really don't feel comfortable commenting on that because I'm not sure why he did the amendments. Um, so he could probably answer that for you.
Okay, I'll have to send you something. Um, I mean, I was just wondering why inherent doesn't state, like, cause we do have something about. I, I thought we had something about chronic nuisance before. Oh, that got crossed out too. Okay. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Beal about that, cause I was a little confused by that as well. And then, um, the only last thing I have is like, is it, you know, is it possible to add a cap to this ordinance, at least for the time being, um, for the residential areas? Like, for me, the ones that I, you know, the constituents that I've heard from are the ones that live in the residential areas. You know, those are the people who've come here. Um, you know, Huron has a cap. A lot of, of the local, um, places like Catawba, Marblehead, they don't even allow short-term rentals unless they've been grandfathered in. Um, I'm wondering how we can amend this to put a cap on at least residential? Like, I, you know, I think there's areas in our city that were built for tourism, right? Like, I feel like the condos or like over the bridge, a lot of people who bought there, like, were buying second houses. And it was intended to be that way. I mean, I'm sure there are some full-time residents who live in the condos and, and things like that. But I'm just wondering, and it could be amended later, but you know, I, I just would like to ask if we could put a cap on the residential sections, um, for now and then see like how this ordinance works out next year. I mean, if we find that we either don't need the cap or we, you know, we can, you know, take it away. But that's the areas where I'm hearing the most complaints about, you know. And I did draw up a map that shows everywhere in Port Clinton that, that are those single residential houses that are being, being used, um, currently for short-term rentals. Um, so.
Ms. King, if I could just ask you a question. Um, did you receive those complaints about short-term rentals before or after this ordinance came out?
Um, well, the, the ones were before the ordinance. You know, they came to city council.
Other than those two, other than those two individuals?
I have, um, um, someone that I know who lives on Perry, um, near, uh, Lakeview Park. And also another person on, um, uh, near Lakeview Park. Um, they said they have like four of them and they're, and they're block. Um, you know, and a lot of times like they're predominantly fishermen that are coming there. And so like, there's a lot of boat parking, like, so it's, it does cause an issue on her, her block.
And I think we do have four, maybe or five on that one block.
Oh, there's.
Yeah, I think it's Ash Street.
There's four.
Yeah, there's four on the block.
Yeah, there's a bunch on Elmas too, Elm two. So like, just that little area seems to be very congested with, with short-term rentals. And like, I think that the, the things that start to become an issue are like the boats on trailers and, and things like that. Or like all along the streets and make it harder for the people living there.
So what I could say to this is we are a statutory municipality. We are not a charter municipality. Huron, Sandusky, Toledo, the ones that have set caps on them are charter municipalities. So they basically can do whatever they wanna do. Um, and they've set these caps. Uh, Marblehead and Catawba is both with Mr. Vickley. They have no regulations as it goes. Um, they're, they're villages. They don't have, you know, the regulations. So they could be sued any given day, um, by somebody who have, who wants a short-term rental in there because there is nothing in the revised code that states you can limit them. Um.
Is there something that says you cannot limit them? Cause that's what I.
It doesn't say either way. Um, it, it does say that, um, there was legislation proposed, um, which says that, you know, cities can't do anything with them. But as of right now, it doesn't say you can. It does not say you can't. The charters, when you have a charter, you can pretty mu- you write the charter. It's like your own rulebook.
Right, understand.
And they're the ones so far that we have seen the caps in. We are not a charter. We're a, we're a statutory, so we don't have the ability to write something in. I caution with that statement because we could get, you know, the city could be sued. Because if we tell somebody, especially somebody who purchased the property already, that you can't have it here or you can't do this, or you can't do that. That's the only caution.
We wouldn't allow them to just like, we wouldn't allow them to open a bar in their residence, you know.
Well, we have, right, but we have.
So like, that's what I'm saying. Like, you know, there's a limit on other, other types of institutions. You know, we wouldn't let them open a dispensary in their residence.
Absolutely not. But these rentals that we're regulating, this is a regulation statute. The rentals that we're regulating right now are already in effect. We've already, you know, um, had them fill out like a, it, it, it's just like a one-page.
Right. And I'm, and I'm definitely not saying that we should not allow all the ones that are currently.
Okay, so you're saying for new ones?
Yes, I'm saying like, I feel like if, if we like took the number of houses that we have there currently, um, short-term rentals and like maybe just a little bit more and then like cap it there and see what happens, you know, because.
So, and that's a discussion for council. You guys, you guys decide what the laws are. You guys decide what the ordinances, you know, want or not. If you guys wanna do it, it could be done. I strongly caution that, um, we could see a lawsuit. There have been lawsuits that have been brewing in other cities. Um, I don't know if anyone's actually gone through with it, but there, there has been that cautionary, um, statement made to municipalities. So I, I honestly, I don't have a crystal ball. I couldn't tell you what will or what not happen.
Yeah, that's it.
But we're not under a charter, so we, we're, we're swimming in, you know, I hate to say unchartered waters, but we're swimming, you know, in, in an area where we could be under attack. That's all I'm saying. You guys can decide what you wanna do. Um, but I do wanna let you know there is that possibility.
Okay. But we could like define that as like the R three section, for instance. We could put something in the ordinance that says like, you know, I don't know, a hun- like, I, I think there's like sixty or so there now. But like, you know, we could cap it at eighty or a hundred or something like that. Okay. That's, okay, that's all the questions I have.
Madam President, um, to what Kathy was saying, I, I do think we need to look at, yeah, again, the ones that are already there, they're there. But there, there does seem to be, uh, we, we can regulate how many businesses are in certain areas.
I'd be upset if I've been working on one for the last year and put all this money. And now before I open it, they say we're capping what we have.
Did you violate our zoning when you bought it? With the intention of doing it as a?
I don't, I mean, I didn't, but let's.
I, if you're using your house as a short-term rental and it's not allowed in our zoning, are you breaking our zoning laws?
Well, but then you're selectively applying it. You're applying.
I, I'm not applying any.
Person next door, you know, so.
Right, but I think we're.
You have a point, but your point could open up a whole can of, I, I understand what you're saying. These are all illegal. Every single one in the, in the city is illegal right now.
In R three. In R three.
Pardon me?
In R three.
Yes, right, right.
Well, and any, any R.
Yes.
But I think we need clarification from Mr. Vickley and maybe Mr. Matt. We need some more clarification.
Either way, you can't, you can't use that to, to enforce some and not others. I understand your point. I, I do. And I don't, I don't know if I agree or disagree anymore, but we gotta be careful with it. That's all.
I understand.
Mr. Murray is absolutely correct. That's where you would see a lawsuit potentially come, when somebody purchased a property and they're fixing it up. Now, Ms. Gilman, um, legally speaking, the definition in zoning says that, you know, the residential, um, the dwelling is for permanent use. Somebody purchased it exclusively for permanent use. Um, if you look at the auditor's website, you know, you see people who own second residences. They don't get the homeowner occupancy credit, so they're not, they're not purchased for, exclusively for permanent use. So we can't just, I mean, I wouldn't use the word illegal because if, if, if somebody lives in California and they purchased a home, you know, let's say on Fulton Street, and their sole purchase was for business purposes, it's not purchased exclusively for permanent use by that person.
I have many people who own homes in my ward that are not the permanent homes. They're long-term rentals and we're talking about short-term here. So you can't really, it's, we can't tell if people are gonna use it for, but we can regulate what we want to happen in certain areas. Because we don't know how people are gonna use their properties.
Right, and a long-term rental has a different definition than a short-term rental.
Right.
It's over 30 days.
Yeah. Right, but when you say somebody else bought it and they don't live in it, I mean, they could not live in it and be using it as long-term rental. So, I mean, we can't, we just have to look at the short-term rentals, what we want for the city and do we wanna continue to have, just let them, anybody can buy and do whatever they want with any house in the city? Or do we wanna regulate that? We don't allow businesses in residences. We don't allow certain things there. Like I could buy a house and say, I wanna put a dispensary in my neighborhood, cause that's a lot of money and I could do great, but we don't allow that.
And you're being, you had on the statement that says you cannot rent it overnight. Um, and so when you say you cannot rent it overnight, it's, when you look at the long-term rental definition, it would not fall under renting it overnight. It would also not fall under, cause overnight is one night. Um, and it would also not fall under the, somebody purchasing it to live in it. You know, cause these people, it's very, and I believe the gentleman who were here from the Ottawa County Improvement Corporation indicated that you can tell very clearly when you look at the auditor's mailings that these people don't live in the city, have no intention of living in the city, purchase these as investment, you know, second properties, never lived in them. You know, they've, they've lived, and that's what we're talking about, the responsible local person, which allows people to don't even live anywhere near here. So I ju, I just, just wanna caution with that.
Right, and I think we need to tread lightly. We need a little more information. I think the zoning inspector can clarify some of it for us.
Yeah, I think too, I'm not just focusing on the dwelling definition, but focusing on definitions that do address transient occupancy are only those definitions, there's like hotels and motels and different things. That's what kinda caught my eye. Cause those are the only ones that actually have, you know, these are transient accommodations. So, and if we're, and if that's the only definition it fits into, then we do have zoning regulations for hotels and motels outside of residential areas.
I just, I think we do have a couple of things to look at and I, but we do need something, so.
Okay. Seeing enough for the business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I put this office body adjourned.
For a second.
For a second.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Motion by Ms. Phillips, second by Mrs. King, to adjourn. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same thing. To adjourn. Thank you.